With them stand for the prayer and remain standing for the buzzer.
Praise God, our heavenly father, as we cry our hearts this evening, come before you, we want to thank you for all your many, many blessings in life. And Lord, just ask that you'll continue to be with our employees in courthouse, employees statewide, countywide. Lord, we ask you to be with our law enforcement, our first responders throughout the county. Now, Lord, we ask that you'll be with us this evening, give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for our county, we give you the word for this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know, I've got nothing I can turn around. Okay, your commissioners present, Claire, Luke, newspaper, Joel, call me the order, we ask for approval of the.
Added the correspondence was not on the one I emailed you. Also, when I actually went through the box of stuff that needed to be added, which I didn't do the night I emailed it out, which was late, by the way. A circuit clerk new hire, sheriff, pro officer, middle school, emergency hire. We also had this letter regarding these subjects that had it, right then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, letter from state hacks department for the successor. And then the work session for tomorrow.
Okay, but still move the agenda with the change.
A second.
I proved that also.
No minutes today, I hope to have it tomorrow.
Okay, well, let's hold off the constable's operation in the states until the end of the meeting, so these fine people don't have to be bored to death for them. Correspondence office of the assessor monthly two thousand, October two thousand twenty-four month report. The report, the assessment report basically gives you amount of dog taxes that she's collected on this report.
Yeah, she said.
Mobile home deep cows that's been purchased. The coyote management fees that have been paid out. And then it just, then it just distinguishes the dog taxes between the municipalities, so garden originally kind of big one, correct. And then we have the dog wouldn't report for the month of October, she picked up nine dogs, sixteen cats. Actually was able to get rid of eight dogs and fifteen of the cats. Which is pretty good. And we received. Our G O W basically divisional correction rehabilitation cost for. Keeping inmates for the month of October, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents. Which it's a per diem rate of forty-five dollars ninety-seven cents a day for, for inmate. And we're happy with thirty-one thousand, that's. It was down in the twenties a couple times, but.
Yeah, absolutely, free backup burden, yeah.
I saw that too. Okay, we received a. Notice change of rate from out near gas company.
There's notice for every account, so.
Doesn't say how much the, they'll, they're going before the public service. Oh, so they're just asking for an increase, the increase hasn't been determined yet.
Please don't want to be direct or.
Yeah, first, yeah, service. Want to get a lot.
It's not only worse.
Yeah, it's not. So say I saw about six thousand gas bills.
So anyhow, they're asking public service commission for a hearing to increase the gas rates. That will be determined at a later date. Mission order correspondence board and appointments, I'm not sure. We haven't, we don't have any, no. They update on courthouse annex approval project, anything that they.
It's, it's still happening. A lot of paint on the walls. They're working their way through, it's not a whole lot of update, it's definitely gonna be December.
Okay, and in the random park projects, bike trail, cover no tunnel, I know the tunnels on hold, bike trails on hold because of. Of funding, which actually I felt really bad because there was just a press release from Alton Party and Grant both got bike trail money. But.
From who?
It was a federal D O T grant. The same one that funded the sidewalks for the city of Kaiser.
That's the one of Mr. Barnes and.
Well, that would, well, it could have been either. The Carpen Dale or this one. I mean, I feel bad that it's during anything, but quite frankly, um, we don't have the bandwidth to do this exact moment. I don't have the bandwidth to manage bike trail.
We had applied for money for this project through Senator Manchin. Uh, and I think even Senator Capitol. But we haven't heard anything from either one of them.
And actually, I've reached out to their appropriations and Marah, and just know once you know any of that.
So now we have to go with justice.
Is Kaiser applied for? You remember the amounts, Liz, I read it in the papers where I saw it, sidewalk, right, because they only end up getting like thirty or sixty thousand.
They didn't get as much as they applied for, but I don't remember the exact numbers.
Yeah, but I did see that Hardy Grant both got. Like trails.
All right, update on C D B T C V, I felt department facility, but we're gonna, do you have any?
No, we're just getting ready to be wrapped here before long. I don't know what all A J's putting on, but the health department facility project itself is up after bids.
Yeah, I just say that then.
Yeah, bid meeting yesterday, yesterday.
They issued a whole time of big addendum today, answer a million questions.
I didn't get to go to it, I was tired.
So yeah, so that addendum was basically the questions from Alaska, I'm doing there, they just threw all the questions in there.
Was you out there then?
Yeah.
I didn't get, I couldn't go.
Oh, there was, there was a lot more people there than last time. Yeah. Yeah, I think we had four, maybe five contractors, different contractors there.
Local, any local.
Yeah, some local.
I was gonna say, some of the local guys been asking me about it, they kind of come together and form a plan to be able to so be eligible bids.
We can come down.
Yeah, cameras there. Yes. Yesterday. Um, the, the mobile health unit is titled, I've added to the insurance that they've not sent us our invoice for what it'll cost to insure yet. So I'm sure that'll become at some point, it probably has to go to a special adjuster because it's a cost. But that has all been done, it's titled with recognition, I turned it title into send it last week.
And we did notice that the first invoice had one bin number and the second invoice had a second bin.
Different bin number? I used the title.
Well, yeah, well, the title matches the second one, one ended in seven, first invoice ended in seven seven, the second invoice ended in seven six. And the title, we were talking seventy-six, I don't know where that came from.
Oh, okay, it was definitely, I used the certificate of origins, they said. It's titled correctly, just maybe they.
And then said, you want me to go and take mobile, uh, unit off the address for now, just because that is done.
Yeah.
And the final payment was made to the L D B vendor as well.
Okay, thank you. Does she have any, do you know if we're funding?
I do not, we've got certain applications now, they're like one year.
Okay, and then meeting tomorrow, girl. Yeah, a couple of questions about that.
It's a new.
Twenty second. What?
New room twenty second, is the last day to put in application?
And then what we said, Jason, twenty second?
Twenty second.
And then how does one get an application, can you get a hard copy application?
You can get a hard copy. I don't know if they're printing it all with, I lean all over now, I'm kind of had this fumbled. Um, used to her taking care of that, so I need to get on the ball on that, there'll be applications here now. Uh, you can, I'll put out, I'll put out, we'll get a gen news release, press release.
I actually put together something this afternoon from, I think Dana had shared, something that the committee sent out, so.
Okay. And she's on top of it. But that work session tomorrow will be on YouTube if anyone, yeah, doesn't plan to, well, it'll be on Zoom too, but it'll be on YouTube as well next week. The application, even twenty fifth, we'll be reviewing them.
Yeah, yeah, we'll resume on the twenty fifth and then meet with the ones that we select December fourth, December fourth.
Okay, thank you. Update on town Bridley, ongoing issue with outside property. Do you have anything to do on that?
I haven't heard enough.
They cited them.
Yeah, no, I don't have.
But I don't know where they're doing there.
Who's saying?
Sorry, what, what I have related to them there, I can't. They actually called the day, apparently, their water has been shut off. There's been public service commission, but they, I don't. That's a risky issue. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll, we'll keep that on there. Go next time, don't mind. Okay, mental county created preventive resource officer positions and requested change to civil service.
And since that's running the funding.
Well. Did anyone talk, did you guys have a chance to talk to the school board? I didn't have anything to reach out to.
Uh, I, I did, I talked to Troy. He assured me that they will continue to reimburse us at the level that they have been, which is based on the teacher's salary. I had Lauren get me some numbers and it's in an email and.
There's only one of you wants to go over there, isn't there?
Well, and that should say, I don't think all of them want to go.
Two, I know two dozen, oh, I just think we need to put that in the back burner. I don't.
So.
It's like eight thousand dollar.
Yeah, I think we're looking at, because, because we're going to start putting into retirement, instead of them getting nine percent retirement from the school, they're going to get seventeen percent retirement. So that would be about four thousand dollar increase.
But that eight thousand dollars would give you an officer for during the summer.
And, and it should be four thousand increase in the retirement and about a four thousand increase on the salary. Um, but it would give us somebody versus snow day, they can go out and. Uh, help with traffic accidents or if there's holidays and like Christmas break, Thanksgiving break. If they don't take a vacation, they can help cover other vacations and cover the road. Uh, so there is some benefits to it. But honestly, I think only the new one from Frankfurt Middle School was interested in going into civil service, I think the other two. The one from Frankfurt High in Kaiser, I don't think they want to.
I thought the one from Frankfurt High didn't.
That one, that's Bill, that's Bill Clark.
Bill Clark, yeah.
Oh, I didn't think he did, I thought it was so.
Uh, that's who I was told, the other two didn't want it. I'm not for sure, I was told that.
I talked to Bojum Datter's football game and. Uh, and I didn't seem, didn't seem like Clark wanted to.
It wouldn't benefit Clark because he's on the stage, the retirement's not gonna be, uh, like a huge.
Civil service gives you other benefits, like you get holiday, I mean, you get vacation days, right now they don't get vacation sick days. Um, but when they do that, when they sign in civil service, they're not getting the summers off, they're not getting the holidays off, so they're waiting, you know.
So how much is that going to cost us in overtime here? Waiting overtime, because if they're working, if they're working for the school for their salary and they work for us through the summer, that's gonna add an extra.
You're paying, if I, the salary difference.
I know, but.
The four thousand dollar salary difference is the yearly salary.
I know.
So it's a four thousand for the whole year, so that's them work for the summer already. If there's no school, then they, instead of report to the school, like no, or no, or snow day, then they just report.
To the sheriff's.
To the sheriff's department.
Don't, don't be expected to work a forty hour week, whether there's school or no school, if there's a day off of school, they'll start to make up eight hours. Somewhere else, or if there's a week off of school, they've got to work the road.
For the, for the employees, doesn't sound like a great deal. It's not, I don't think it is, other than they get some protection from having been in civil service and the civil service.
Right.
Well, it also guarantees them a paycheck in the summer, because that funding has run out, and that means they will not get a paycheck for two months. So that's the other thing, this will guarantee them a check in the summer.
As a school employee, are they set up one twenty or twenty-four pays?
They're not a school employee, they're county employees, so that we cannot extend it to.
So you're only owing twenty.
Yeah, so they do not get paid for two months.
And for a young person, civil service is a definite, the multiplier of civil service retirement is a huge.
For, yeah. Right.
So even if you have to work summers, you can still retire in twenty years, if you're in purse tier two, you're, you're working twenty or sixty.
I think we need to talk to them and see, I think we need to.
I don't want to push anything on them, I don't need to, no, they don't want.
I'd say you give them an option one time, either you're in or you're out, but that's the thing, they'll gain, take the vacation days, they'll gain. A job guaranteed in the summer, pay in the summer.
Right.
They lose, you know, the responsibility of not, they lose.
Being on the school schedule.
School schedule, yeah.
So now, let me figure this out, how this is going to work, they get their regular salary for working for the school and then the, the ten weeks through the summer, I'll just say ten weeks. They get a salary from the county?
No, no, the salary stays exactly like it is right now, the school board's only gonna reimburse us for the time that they're in the school. So like right now, it's forty-six thousand, so if their salary sunk from sixty-three, the school board's gonna reimburse us the forty-six.
So it's going to cost us possibly another ten, twelve thousand dollars.
Well, there's a difference of eight.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. Even if guys don't put everybody in civil service tonight, you could still approve, the sheriff has a letter here, it's the last thing in there.
He's already civil service, he's.
You could still approve to appoint him to the school and then we could talk to the other, it's.
Oh, yeah, he's, yeah.
He's gonna stay civil service.
Right, but I'm saying you don't have to decide everyone's civil service.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't want to push this on, but I don't want it. I'd really like to talk with him as well, and, you know, we'll get old and then we'll ring together and talk with him and then.
Right, that would only be fair back in byers. I, I do feel pretty strongly that Kaiser Middle School needs a pro, we've sent.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
Like soon.
They don't, they do, definitely.
Okay, so.
Carry over again?
Well, carry over that, are we, are, are you okay with?
That's under new business.
Yeah, okay, all right, update on general election two thousand twenty-four.
It's over.
Sorry, not quite. Do you all, you all want me to reach out to the three and just get something?
No, we would like to have a meeting.
Okay.
That possible.
Well, I'm getting sort of impossible, I just need to know what we need to do, whether you just want to reach out to them informally, or do you want me to come to a meeting, or?
I'd like to see him come here and sit down with me together. She can come the next question, maybe.
Don Hudson and Clark. Remar, Frank, sorry, Clark, okay. Okay, so the election update.
Well, we did get to fourteen or fifteen thousand, I thought we were gonna get to.
How close were we, twelve, thirteen? But that's still good.
Because we had two thousand, or twelve thousand eight hundred ninety, but we had, we have two hundred provisionals, which will actually put us over thirteen, so. Um, yeah, we had the thirty-eight hundred for early voting, we had three hundred absentee's. Uh, two hundred and thirty-eight of those were already counted, and then we only had eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven show up for election day. So it was.
Still a decent turnout.
Yeah, sixty-seven percent for the whole county.
Yeah.
So we have our canvas on Tuesday, we are just starting at nine o'clock, we'll be in the courtroom, everyone's welcome, I encourage anybody to come and, and watch the processing. So.
So what, what is the like state average of turnout?
I haven't been on the, since everybody completed it.
Okay.
I was on it that night, I don't recall.
Were you or Kai or?
It's about to happen. So, and then I also have to remind the school board to have somebody present at the canvas as well. That's the levies on there.
Yeah, you better.
Yeah.
So on, what margin did that levy have to pass, like what percentage?
Oh, it was well passed.
But I didn't know what, what are the levies, sixty percent?
Fifty.
Oh, just a simple. They were sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine point thirty-one, yeah, so that was not an issue.
Sixty-two, sixty-two percent was voter turnout for West Virginia.
For the whole state.
And we were sixty-seven, so that's good.
Did all fifty-five report?
All fifty-five reported.
Okay, so weren't completed, some of them, some of those counties finished so early, I just don't know how it's even possible.
They start early. They start early, I knew, uh.
I know Hampshire's.
That's why they get done early.
No, that's not well. So that's all I have on that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and if, well, we haven't done the bills yet, if I could get approval to pay the election bill, which would be my poll workers, um, the polling locations. Um, the election related bills that need to be.
How many thousands is it, do you know?
Uh, see, the poll workers were around twenty-eight thousand.
Did you have enough poll workers?
I did, I did, every precinct had at least, uh, the five minimum, and then I just, every individual that came in class in summer.
Good. My second, that will also. Okay, down to new business, approve a new hire for a circuit clerk's office, received a letter. Uh, members of the commission, if approved, Elizabeth Evans decided to join the circuit clerk's office and will start work on December this, April two thousand twenty-four. So do I have a motion, a second?
Erica.
Who?
Erica Evans, she works in the office.
Okay, yeah, I know her. I did, that, or, yeah, Roger and Ben.
If I can go back to the election, I should say this, I am so proud of my staff, they did an awesome job, they really did. Um, there is a lot of work to elections that people just don't realize, and when I bring someone new and they were, they're surprised at just how much is involved in election. But as much as we do, and I told my poll workers, because, you know, they said nothing about the job I do, I can do, we can do six, eight months worth of work. But if I don't have election workers on election day, the election doesn't happen. So every one of those poll workers that stepped forward, you know, it's very much appreciated that they took on that responsibility, so.
Thank you. Um, office of the sheriff Kaiser Middle School complex, Yonker resource officer, so I guess we need approval to.
How, how much? How much over does he make, I mean, what's this going to cost us on overtime?
He has eleven years.
Well, yeah, but if he comes off the street and goes out there, who's gonna pick up his shift?
Well, that's the.
That's what concerns me.
Sheriff wants to do an emergency hire.
Yeah, I seen that. To replace him.
And I'm, I'm under the impression that they've already rearranged the schedule.
Yes, they're working on it, yeah, I know that.
Yes.
But I'm just fulfilling the, yeah, I was hoping buddy to be here, I'd like to ask.
Yeah, I, I, that's my, that's my concern, we're already short-staffed and the deputies, and now we're gonna take another deputy off and move him up to the school, not saying we don't need him at the school too, but. If we move him up there and then that costs us time and a half.
And we have.
Still a spot, that's.
Took applications, the deadline was the thirty-first, we only had twelve applications, out of those twelve, two were officers that were already certified. So if he does an emergency hire, I'm one of the two. I believe so, I think he's only doing one right now to replace Yonker.
Okay.
To replace the schedule, and then we have the gentleman, the young man that passed the last testing, that is going to start employment on January one. And, because he's going to the January academy, so there's no reason to have him start now, because he cannot do anything until he goes to the academy, so that's a new money thing. Until he's actually, he cannot do anything until he goes to the academy, so he needs to start January one.
Okay, what about the second?
Well, that'll come out of this next testing we're doing, so those are the twelve applications that we took on the thirty-first. And we have to schedule a new test date, test those, and hopefully out of those twelve, we can get one.
So he, there, there is one now qualified.
Two, two are already certified. Oh, that's that. Directly shown right now, emergency hires are temporary status, you still have to pass the test, you still have to pass everything.
Yeah.
So.
One, I don't reckon went well. So one of these certified officers is gonna be the emergency help.
It's.
Okay, but in theory, you could hire both certified officers if they pass all the testing.
They would, there's other circumstances involved. At least, I'm not thinking.
Okay, okay, all right, so what are we gonna do about the resource officer for the middle school?
Well, if we're gonna get him replaced, I don't have a problem with that. When will he start the middle school?
The next rotation, I think, is it next week?
I heard twelve.
I know he's meeting with, yeah, so he's meeting, uh, the sheriff met with his officers today, or actually right now, maybe, I don't know. So they're just, they worked all that out.
So they're working out the schedule now too, right?
Yep, sure.
What do you guys think?
I'll make a motion we approve it.
Huh?
I'll make a motion we approve you on it.
I, I've got a question for a second then. Uh, so Yonkers is gonna work for the county through the summer months and stuff, and, and it's not gonna cost us. How much extras it gonna cost us?
Well, the difference, he has a little bit higher salary, that's, but the school board is only, but also, see, Yonker has degrees. So when the teacher, when the, the school board sets the salaries, they take degrees in consideration. So they're gonna reimburse at a higher rate for Yonkers because he has degrees.
That's true.
So that would be the last for us, yeah, they will reimburse that.
I think the S R Os, they just consider their certification a bachelor's degree, and that's what he has.
I'm not sure what his certificate or his degrees were.
Yeah.
So.
But I don't, so I mean, it might be a higher rate, but I think they already considered at that level. Unless he's gotta be eight plus fifteens.
Uh, my question is, are they gonna be others come back and said, hey, he's making eight more, I'm wondering.
Well, that's only under civil service though.
Eight, you mean the other, that's if they choose to go to civil service or not.
Right, yeah.
They don't have like years in civil service.
If they go to civil service, then that's gonna be eight thousand dollars.
Yonkers has eleven years on the road, that's why he's.
Yeah, I know that, I realize that, but I'm just, I'm.
All because of his previous experience.
He's a current officer.
He's a long. He hasn't been here a lot.
He's been here about ten and twelve.
I've only been here eight, he started after I did.
I was saying it was ten years.
Yeah, but he was down in Nix County too.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, I think it's, because I started eight years ago, he wasn't here.
Yeah, he came from Nix County. He's been here a good while.
Oh, and I think he's an excellent fit, I'm not arguing that, I'm just, yeah.
But if this is going to.
Your concern is not the fit, it's just the money.
If this one costs us eight thousand dollars, if the others come on board.
That's not gonna affect this though, this is one.
No, I know that, that is gonna affect, bottom line is gonna affect our budget.
But you're gonna have an officer for the summer, and the idea behind that was that when the other officers are on vacation. Hopefully, it was gonna affect somebody over time from vacation, but you keep getting told that and then.
We, we was told the last two we hired, the last time we upped the deputies, not, not this.
Very long.
I know, but this is what I'm getting at, we was also told when we upped the deputies. That it will cut down on the overtime, and it didn't, it picked up the overtime.
Well, it got away from the agreement, that's an agreement you guys made is to give, you guys.
Yeah, but even. E- even after that, it still cost us more money, it's cost us more, this overtime's gonna have to be dealt.
It looks like paid would be around fifty-five thousand, would be his salary.
And how much would school cover?
The base is forty-six, it might even go to forty-eight.
It looks like he was at forty-six nine for the raise, and that was eight thousand, so he's right around fifty thousand.
And the school board's gonna pay forty-six? Yeah, they're not gonna pay tall. So that's not.
Forty-six was the bottom, was the base, but we didn't make it a little more because of his education.
You need a pro officer.
We definitely need to.
Be honest, that's the school that needs it.
That's the one that he's, that's the grant based on that one too, so.
But we were able to get reimbursed for Clark and rumors, we're not losing that sixteen thousand dollars, I mean, I talked to guys, actually, I've got everything ready, I'm sweeping for the jack time sheets now.
Well.
We get that.
Could we do this, let me ask you this, you made the motion, can we do this on a, say, for this year, just to see how things go with this? Because if they can fact abite us, I'm, I'm not in favor of doing it. Because I, I mean, I'm not in favor of putting an officer out there, I'm just not in favor of the county having to pick up a. Because I, I mean, I'm not in favor of putting an officer out there. I'm just not in favor of the county having to pick up a bunch of money.
Why don't we just do it for a year?
Yeah, I'd say do it for the remaining part of this.
And the school year.
Yes. And because.
I'll, I'll make my motion to include that.
And I'll, I'll second that.
And I'll prove it also. So that we're approving it. For this year. As a resource officer for the middle school. Until the end of the school year.
And maybe one of the officers that applied that. If I finish, if they're, maybe that one of them.
Okay.
The drunker really won.
He wants stage shift. I know, I, I know what he wants. He wants stage shift.
Within education, that was his original thing.
Yeah, okay.
Now, the sheriff emergency hire, that was more or less to let you know that he's in the process, because there's things that has to be. Steps that need to be taken.
Okay. So you need a motion to approve the emergency hire. Once the steps are taken. I make a motion.
I'll second it.
And I approve that also. Okay, updated family court space lease execution.
Uh, updated. When we did the family court space, you guys know, worked at Supreme Court, so that they would pay for the cost of the renovation, um. Since the renovation is complete, we just need to update the lease so that they'll pay the new amount. Um, their legal people sent me, um, the updated lease to be in effect November first, so that we can build them at, I shouldn't say, we've been building them at the new rate for quite some time. But we can build them for all of the square footage, um, effective November first, when I see the president. I need y'all to approve, I need the president to sign that lease.
Okay, the motion to approve the lease beginning November first, for the family court space. I'm sorry. Proven also. And offer us to approve this side, yeah. Okay, annual E O P.
The same thing my wife did.
Annual E O P updates and, um, obligation.
Um, yes, so every year, you all just approve for the emergency operations plan, um, that updates have been made and that the county is adopting the plan as its emergency operations plan, um, I sent you all the actual and access to your emails, that's on the L A P C, they go with those meetings. Um, I don't print them, because it's, you know, a hundred pages worth of stuff. Um, anyone is certainly welcome to review those public documents, I'd be happy to give them to you, but it's more of a it's an E M P G requirement, you all sign off on it every year and sign the record changes. So I just need you all to adopt the plan and approve changes for this year.
I make a motion to adopt the plan and approve the changes for this year. I'll second, and I approve it also.
I have to check for you.
I think I just got it.
Arpa obligations of funds agreement.
Okay, so I was reviewing the guidance as we get to the end of the obligation year for our ARPA monies, um. Initially, I had kinda made the assumption that obligation would mean if it is reported through the treasury portal, as the funding is assigned to a subgrantee, that would mean it's obligated. However, the guidance says that we actually have to have an agreement in place with the subgrantee, which is a little bit of a weird relationship, since we don't do reimbursements, we pay directly, but nonetheless, we just have to have a written agreement in place with the people who have not spent all of their money, um. Frankfurt P S D, Town of Carpendale, and the Pearl Hall of Water project are the three projects that all the funding hasn't been expended and certainly will not be expended prior to December thirty one. That's the obligation deadline, um. So because of that, we just have to have a written agreement in place that says, this is what the money's gonna be used for, and that they'll spend it by the end of point twenty six. And after December thirty first, we cannot change what that money's used for. It's either used for that project or goes back to treasury. Um, so I have those agreements ready. I've sent them to the P S Ds for review and to all the engineers, um. Everyone's provided me with the appropriate scopes of work. Um, I just need y'all's approval for that agreement, and I'll have, um, Jerry sign them tonight, I think, the commissioner.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the funds agreement, so.
I'm sorry, I approve it also.
How much we got?
Um, you know, I told you all, look for this meeting, I need to look.
Really?
Um, it depends, because I need to look at the amount of interest. That's, there's, there's only a little, that, that's about all, it's just the interest, because we've kind of, it's like, we had very little left, then we all bought the McGrath's or some of the squads, and I, I gotta look. There's not much left at all. But we need to spend it by the end of this year.
Okay, Starlink for nine one one?
Yes, um. So we had an emergen, we had a meeting, a regional emergency management meeting, and they were talking about the instance in North Carolina, obviously, and, um, Starlink, and it really got me thinking about how we do some things in nine one one and redundancy, um. And I started looking at our options, um. I would like, we have cellular backup up there for internet, um, and we have a satellite phone, and we have backup cellular, um. Long story short, we get a Starlink, um, it's about six hundred bucks to buy, and then about a hundred and fifty bucks a month for fifty gigs or two hundred and fifty gig, two hundred and fifty dollars a month for one terabyte. Probably only need the fifty gigs, um. But if we get a Starlink, there's quite a few things I can do to build some redundancies we didn't have previously. And there's some outdated redundancies I can get rid of and have a more efficient, like I've got a hundred dollars worth of stuff I can eliminate right off the bat, that we can utilize Starlink for, um, and then we have a more reliable backup. Keep a network connection as well. Yeah, because it's fifty bucks a month, so we're talking about six hundred dollars to buy it. And I've already talked to Global about configurations and stuff. I don't wanna get into all the details, because like of how the redundancies are working for now, I'll happily talk to any awful lot about it. Um, but I think it's worthwhile investment and it'll do us.
To read out your backup cellphone.
Yes.
Which is, if there's a major disaster, like what was in North Carolina, and a lot of the cellphone stuff was down, I still wouldn't have any backup.
Right.
The Starlink could provide, provide you with the backup.
And we have satellite phone, but it doesn't integrate. It's very old. I mean, it's kinda handset this thing that you like, and the Starlink. Yeah, there's a lot of things we can do, um, and.
Makes sense.
Yes.
I just think it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I'm moving to put that Starlink in nine one one.
I'll second that.
I approve it also.
I just upgraded our fire, stopped in our ability and starting.
I hope that we're done with the C D.
And so, for residential use, is it still a hundred fifty dollars a month?
Residential, I think it's one thirty, it's, it's in the twenty.
And there's actually a lower residential too.
Yeah.
That's, that's a little cheaper.
It's still closer to six hundred to buy, because.
The.
It's good.
It's, it's really.
The commercial one, you have to pay by your usage, but that's because they give you priority usage on the network. The residential one's unlimited data too.
So why doesn't our state lean towards Starlink instead of this fiber that they're working on? Which is costing millions and millions, you know.
Needs that kind of.
Well, I even, whenever I was trying to go through that stuff with Alconet and everything. And I hit a brick wall real quick, whenever they said they would not put money, they didn't want to put any money out for wireless. And that's all that they was doing, but what doesn't make sense is that they could efficiently supply people internet that were miles back a dirt road that. Don't, won't run a cable to, and they could do it within a few months, and it costs them fifty dollars, it costs the people fifty dollars a month for internet.
Counter the blessing if Frontier won't run your cable to you.
But I know that's the plan they have.
I mean, you guys know Mount Storm, where I camp at the lake, we have nothing, and I bought a Starlink, and we've got high speed internet.
Yeah, I don't understand why the state doesn't mean.
Yeah, well, this is my, our fire system, long system in the building, it's all upgraded now.
Because they can't, it's impossible. It's gonna be impossible to run cable to every little hollow.
You can't do it.
And every little house, you can't do it, too expensive, too expensive. Anyhow.
I can't even get on Frontier to pay my phone bill. I cannot get on to pay it. It keeps kicking me out.
Okay, resolution of participation and cooperation for economic development authority, L E D grant for the development authority.
Okay, so we corrected last year's, which did apparently, he put, he gave them a resolved funding, so they appreciated that.
He did.
Um, the so they do this in November always, um. This year's resolution, we don't have a budget, there'd be adjustment required, and the amount went up again for the match. It is now forty one thousand five hundred dollars.
Wow.
I think it was.
It used to be twenty six.
Is it thirty eight last year or thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty something. So.
That's what we had to pay a match?
Yes. Yes, forty one five.
That's what comes from the county.
Okay, now this res, this grant is gonna run from November to November, is that what it is, or like?
It doesn't actually have a timeline.
Okay, but we did say that we're gonna go ahead and write a check for the forty one with the resolution.
And call it a day.
Right.
Yes, and I actually have a memo.
Watch that we don't run another check before next November.
Yeah.
Like it doesn't slip through us.
Well, that's what I actually have a memo on here coded to give to you today, if they approve it, they just cut the check once, um, rather than to do.
Yeah, for some, for some reason, the L E D grants keep going up normally.
Um, well, you see, I thought the L E D grant was something much different than what it is. E M P G is extremely hard to comply with, and we put a lot of work into it for, um, ten thousand dollars less than that, like all years worth of work. And, um, they have to like, they literally go through a form and check boxes, and then they send them forty one thousand dollars.
Right.
We have to like, ju, they, they don't even have to submit invoices. They just send forty one thousand. E M P G, we have to literally, they reimburse us for every single expense. I've got every electric bill, every water bill, every sewer bill, payroll, it's lovely, anyways. It's just the year.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the L E D grant?
What? We already paid the one, or paying the one this year, which we're gonna have to go ahead and pay the remaining quarters for last year's, to get it current.
Right.
I'll bet.
Because it was short.
Yeah, because we only, we're in our first quarter.
Yeah, we were short.
Or is this the one that started July?
No, this would be the one that started July one.
The, the one that we're budgeted right now.
The one that we're budgeted, yes.
So we paid them first quarter, so we just have to pay them the remaining of the forty one.
I gave Cindy a memo telling them, telling you guys exactly what would need to be paid to get that current and ready to go. And I sent that to the auditor as well, and then this would just be moving forward.
Okay, so that's what I just asked you. This forty one, now we've already paid them the first quarter, July, August, and September.
Right.
Is that out of this forty one?
No.
Okay, so then we still owe them the, the second, third, and fourth quarter out of the current.
Okay, so hold on here, let me, let me tell you where my thinking was.
We budgeted thirty nine thousand.
Right.
So my point is, if we're doing forty one, how much of a budget revision do we have to do this fiscal year?
Okay, so in that memo, what I did was.
So she didn't show me that you gave her a memo.
Okay, well, that was right before elections, so she probably, so the amount that you all paid out last year, which was the twenty eight thousand, I think. And then add the first quarter distribution that you already did. And then just it's one more check for like two thousand dollars, and that gets us current for what they needed for the last grant.
Okay.
And then this one, they, there's just an additional forty one thousand five hundred dollars that needs paid out, and then we are
Current.
Current for this fiscal year, and we don't need to do anything else till next November.
Okay, so I'll have to include that on the budget revision.
Okay, so then we're gonna give them a check of forty one thousand dollars soon.
Like this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then we won't give them anything.
Actually, if you approve it tonight, it'll be in the stack of bills that we're gonna do this week.
Okay, alright, so I have a motion to approve the forty one thousand dollar L E D grant match.
Approved resolution.
With, and resolution. Okay, so do we have a motion in a second? And then prove it also. Please, Roger and Jack. Okay, anything else? Do you wanna go with the administrative report?
Yeah, I do have a lot of stick for that, but I figured it's, I'm sorry.
That's all right. This, this is not getting related.
Well, that's, okay, so Felty just got me this price today. Um, I talked to you all about getting all the vehicles labeled once we got a seal, um. I wanted to get the two trucks with the seal, and then just the words under it that says like facilities or facility services. And then the Traverse and my F one fifty, the seal, and emergency services slash administration, since they're used for both purposes, um, Felty can do that for ninety four dollars per vehicle. Um, I thought that was very reasonable.
Was on one on each side?
That's one on each side, that's what I said, because I even emailed it back and said, do you mean a hundred dollars per side? And he said, no, it's ninety four dollars per vehicle installed. Well, if you have in mind, I'll get that done. I mean, that's not like a huge expenditure that has to be.
That's four vehicles.
That's four vehicles, ninety four.
I'll make a motion when do that.
I'll second that. Prove it also.
Um, this definitely isn't a decision today, because it's huge, but it's something to think about, um. Tuck Hardy had talked about the wall. I just got the pricing for it Thursday, today, November seventh, um. I called her late last week, the Tri-State Memorial, to talk about the War Memorial Wall.
Oh.
Um, and she sent me some stuff. If we replaced the old memorial with the new one, that's the same color, shape, size, finishes, and engrave on both sides to hold approximately a hundred and ninety names, like Mr. Hardy had mentioned. Um, the price would be fifty nine thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars.
Where's that going?
Um, well, it doesn't have to go anywhere, this is just.
I know, but.
It would go where the current wall is, um. I told Mr. Hardy, I, I told you guys I'd get the pricing after Mr. Hardy was talking to us about it, um. To engrave additional names on the existing monument, to fill in the front and back would be two hundred and fifty dollars per name. And other design work and writing would be extra costs, um, there are any names on the front row. Oh, it would be twenty seven thousand dollars to add a hundred and ten names, but a hundred and ten names don't need adding. I just found out how many names would actually need added. Um, does that sound to me like they can fill in? Does that make sense? Can you fill in that?
There's still spots on the front.
Okay, because it says engrave additional names on the existing monuments to fill in front and back. So she's just saying.
Probably just filling in the name, filling in that front and back name.
And then the back, you almost have to put a design where we're laid out the same way as the front.
Okay, so it's two hundred and fifty dollars per name with no design work.
And in total, it's gonna be how?
Well, that, well, but the hundred and ten names isn't realistic, because the new wall, we were gonna do a hundred and ninety spots for future. But I think Tuck said there's only a hundred, there's a hundred and sixty names that need to go on it. So you're talking eighty times two fifty to fill in the rest of all. However, so that's twenty thousand dollars to fill in the rest of the wall, um. I'd have to look at that though, I don't even know like if that would make sense, because the names are listed by war now, aren't they?
They are.
So you'd have to do the wars twice to list the. Okay, and then to replace the existing memorial with a new memorial in a different shape, size, finish, and or color that would allow for war sections to be grouped together easier. Price range will depend on size, color, finish, shape. Um, as a guess, that would be forty to fifty five thousand plus. Depending on what you pick, and engraving is included at time of order, um, if you all decided like.
I wonder if the Legion, the U F W, if I like that, like fun.
Chip in.
I don't know. Well, that's, okay, so I've mentioned to um, Mr. Hardy on election night, that we were gonna do something like this. Of course, he was thinking twenty five thousand. That was more what I was thinking too, not sixty, um. But. Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's fifty nine, ninety five, um. There, remember we talked about a statue for the plaza?
Yeah, yeah.
I think if we were going to buy a new wall, it would make more sense to wait and get something designed that could be a centerpiece for that plaza.
To the statue.
Instead of a statue and that wall over there could still come down, but I think that would be, because then it'd be right there at the front entrance. You could do something more like, um, like there would be a centerpiece more memorial-like rather than just, um.
Stone.
Yeah, so, but.
I agree, I agree with you. That would probably be more fitting.
Yeah, but I think what we ought to do is contact. I think first energy, I think there's people that would make a donation towards that.
So for those that don't understand, the, down in front of the courthouse, the war memorial stone that's down there has names of people on it, but it came from up here Kaiser, or from the, from the.
But it came from up here Kaiser, or from the from the over here to city, in front of the city building. So it only has names on it from people in Kaiser, now it's in front of the Middle County Courthouse. And we already felt that it needs to have the names of everybody in the county that died during a war. Now, that's that's what we're talking about. So we just pricing it out, seeing what it costs and. Figuring out what to do about that.
And the Legion did pay for it last time, but it was twenty five hundred dollars seventy five years ago.
Some names though.
Twenty five hundred?
Seventy five years ago, I think he said it was put nineteen fifty.
That was a lot of money, man.
Well, it just added some names.
Oh, yeah, they add names, he said they add names all the time, but I think he said it was put in there, because it. He's, it was up there. When the fire hall wanted to build a building across the street, it was long before the old fire. I thought he meant when the fire hall got torn down from Memorial Bridge, they moved it. But he said it was across the street from the old fire hall and they put up like some sort of. I think, did they have an old blue building there maybe? When they put that building there is when it got moved.
When it got moved, okay.
So, and again, this isn't like a.
That makes sense, because I don't really remember that being up there, so probably it's been moved down ever since, who knows when.
I mean, do you guys wanna, you guys would be better suited to talk to some people from the Legion, the VFW, I mean, I can, but I think it'd be.
I'd like to talk to uh their way, if they're in the mountain. See if they'd make a donation towards it, there's a, there's some businesses that would make a donation.
And I just gave Dutch a letter, paper, newspaper from older place. The solar place is going in. Uh, trade union sign MOU with the solar project in Middle County.
Yep.
Two hundred forty three million dollar project.
Yep.
And so they, that could possibly be a revenue source.
There's some revenues that can that would contribute to that.
Yeah, like say the windmills.
The windmills and there's something else coming through, I talked to them the other day about it and I asked them if they would. If they have like a little grant program, they said, we can afford it.
I mean, I really, I feel like the Legion and the VFW are the best places to start, because they might already have uh.
Yeah.
The way to pay for it, but you guys are more likely to have connected.
First energy gives a lot to that.
Right.
They they're very, very good at that.
Yeah, you definitely need to talk to them first.
Because you guys know Legion members, which I mean, they say.
Oh, I can get a hold of them.
I'll call him tonight if I get change.
Yeah, north, that's exactly. Yeah, well, yeah, because it's it's gonna be a county wall.
Because you got, yeah, you got the VFW in Port Ashburn, you got the VFW and Legion individually, so.
Do you wanna put this on the agenda, we'll just start carrying it from the agenda to agenda, because it's not like a super high priority, but it's something we can just keep discussing.
I think we need to recognize that.
All I think it's important, that's a thousand dollars, a lot of money that we put up.
Yeah.
Put a stone wall up.
Yeah.
Ooh.
That's crazy.
Um, just got this letter yesterday, so I guess I had time to go, but I didn't um. We have been tentatively approved for the courthouse facilities improvement authority grant to do the um second judge's suite. So um, the, now there's a twenty percent match to that, but obviously it's better than us paying with the lady um. So it's for sixty, just shy of sixty two thousand dollars. Um, the big. January one. And um, but I did unofficially tell Fair Chance, just so they, as they're starting to do things um. They absolutely cannot do anything until the section one of six is complete though, I submitted it this afternoon um. Which it takes up to thirty days to review, that's historic overview, there won't be an issue because it's not in a historical space. Um, that's in one of the conditions. Um, but, yeah, so so we were approved for that. I don't have contract documents, any of that, that'll come out later this month, and when it does, we'll do all the signatures, but. But that was good news, um, those agreements. Um, the phone, the guy said the courthouse phone will not work and the.
For, oh, for security, okay.
Um. We were, I already talked, yeah, I did, because Lauren, yes, because the price we thought was, you guys thought was thirty four thousand, it was thirty four hundred, we already discussed that.
Oh.
Hold on, I've got another list here. It's all just small stops, why it's on the agenda, but. War Memorial with their P lease increases. Um, Lauren done with the high density shelving people on Monday. That has been ordered um. The sprinklers did need clearance of eighteen inches to do the one hundred and two inches. Um, so we are going to initially lower it to ninety nine inches, but it still didn't provide enough clearance. They ended up just raising the ceiling, I think they, yeah, they raised the ceiling um. That's, that's actually, that's all.
Great, thank you, hey, on this Felty, when you order that stuff, the Felty, would you, is is twelve eighteen big enough? Think that's good enough for us?
It's not very big.
I hope they, they ain't very big.
Well, it's like, I don't know.
That's not bad.
Well, what do you think?
I don't know, it's uh, whatever, I would just go with whatever they wanna recommend.
Yeah, and don't put that on the bill, get that bill set for sure.
Yeah, the county's not gonna pay for that, we're not too.
Okay, um. I usually sort of like something this day, you won't know what it's gonna say, but I mean, I can.
We don't know what it's gonna say.
Yeah.
What do you guys want to say?
Well, I, I can be the only one. Yeah, I mean.
If you can order cheap or something, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I'm good, that price is not expensive though either, thirty five bucks.
I'll really good. Yeah.
Oh, and Nate, for the seals, time to next meeting, his flag is here, so.
Okay.
The flags were way more expensive than I thought they were gonna be, so I didn't order them for all county facilities. Y'all want me to, I can, but they're a hundred and eighty bucks.
The West Virginia flag down there, there's like hanging by one, who?
Oh.
Forgot about that, I was looking at it the other night and.
You know how often we replace that flag? Yeah. Actually, I think Gary just brought us a couple. Yes, Gary brought us one. Um. Order. Not the West Virginia. Gary Albron's. Are we going through more paper this year than normal? Have you guys gone like?
I I just went through two boxes.
I've ordered a hundred and fifty cases since February. And it's felt very.
Cases of paper? We went through it all?
I I want, just ordered twenty more cases, we just got those, so a hun- we've gone through, wow, we have five cases left other than that.
That means printer game. Jerry's been doing a lot of hard projects.
I think the sheriff's office every receipt they run, they have to print it all.
It's just, it's felt like a huge amount of paper this year, I don't ever remember ordering that much, like. Yeah, we've gone, well, I I say, we've ordered a hundred fifty, we've gone through a hundred and twenty five at least cases. That's ten reams per case. I just wasn't sure if you guys knew, like, I know it's election year, so you go through a little bit more than normal, but.
Who all uses those papers?
Everybody.
Like everybody in the courthouse?
Everybody in the county.
Everybody, oh, everybody in the county, oh, wow.
But like, not on one, we don't, we use a box of paper every six months.
I use a box of paper every weekend.
Yeah, okay, well.
Maybe it's going.
I don't know, I just was curious if there was something.
It just, I don't know. It is a lot of paper.
Every time we give a bill, we have to print a copy for us and a copy for them.
Well, I just didn't know anything abnormal from previous years, because when I ordered everything in February, it's supposed to be a twelve months, but it lasted until six.
They used to have the carbon little of the Epson printers, the, now they do both sides, eight now, five eleven. So you think for every tax bill, I think they print off two, they have to print out two, so they want to deal with it, so, um, so that would change.
And the meal.
But that carbon paper is probably a lot more than just the flag, it's probably just standard copy paper.
Okay.
That's unreal.
But don't throw cheap on us on the paper, so don't even. I know the one time we had a page where you could like pick it up, you could like see through it, like, who got that paper?
Um, well, I, I ordered the same, they did send us something different this time, so I didn't order as many cases, it's. The same rate, everything, so.
Yeah, what we have right now, pretty good, and it does, the other thing too is when you went cheap, it jammed a lot, so. Yeah.
Well.
I haven't been to uh, region eight yet. I got that paper, like the last time Sarah didn't even take it. Uh, since our last meeting, that was the twenty second. Okay, are you ready? Let me have a full sheet of paper.
I'm ready, go ahead.
Okay, uh, we tested the voting voting machines. Uh. I met with the AG that same day. Uh. I was at Jeremy Taylor's event out at uh Fountain. I had, was at the summer's dinner at Davis Hall.
You offered that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I was at the Parks and Rec meeting. We tested the voting machines again on the twenty ninth. And we met with Next Era. Uh, Energy, they wanted to. Talk about some things. Uh, one at a time.
I wasn't nothing.
No, Jerry wasn't there, I was there.
Me and Roger, we was there at separate times.
I was here at one o'clock, I think.
I was there at twelve.
Yeah, okay, then we had an administrative meeting about Fountain Park Department. Uh, we had, I was on a commission meeting, Zoom meeting on on thirty first. Real quick, all three of us were there when I, I was at the Western Union Department of Highway meeting in Romney. I was at the Veterans Parade, we was in that, I was at the Brighton Fire Department Gun Base. I attended, I got a call to attend the Gideon's Dinner at Fountain Ruin Tank Club. Uh, I was at the courthouse counting votes and I also attended the uh. With cheerleaders, they had a special thing for cheerleaders at Kaiser High School. And I attended that.
Perfect.
Were we all three at the Veterans Day parade?
No, no, just Jerry and I, so, a bunch of kids.
I think all three of us were at the Jeremy's thing.
All three of us were at Jeremy's.
Yeah, what was the other thing you mentioned, you started off with?
Summit, all three at Taylor's, all three at Summer Summit, all three at the Zoom meeting.
Yes.
And.
Before Jeremy's thing.
The test, that A D meeting, we all were at A G.
No, no, Jerry.
Okay, I was at A G.
The test of machines.
Yeah, it was a test. And Dutch and I were at the Rotary Dinner at Fire Hall.
And I had, I had a health department meeting too, I forgot that. I didn't have time for nothing.
So you already have some of what I've had in there, uh, let's see, some of the words. Kinda see what.
Okay, and then next, it was at Next Air Energy?
Next Air, N E X T E.
Hold on a second, okay, N E X T.
E R R A. Um. Oh, that's big, maybe you said everything that I was at, I guess we did. Well, today I was at the, oh, I was at the Health Department Pre-Bid Meeting yesterday. And I was at the Construction Progress Meeting today and. Darren and I has been really good working with us and and being lenient on some things, but he's had some issues and he's. He wants the traffic to stop going through the construction progress, I asked Luke. Luke has a memo there that he's gonna put out that we need to stay out of the construction area, nobody, nobody needs to be going over there for safety reasons. It's just getting too many people and.
Without an escort.
Huh?
Without an escort.
Without an escort. So, but we need to, we need to cut down going in there, we need to stay out of there.
We're staying, we went, a lot of things that we're finding are things that need to be done before they start painting. Uh, we did find some things that needed to be fixed before they start painting. Thermostat is gonna be behind my metal, shall we, go back today, we found that out yesterday. Did P three come and run together?
They haven't done it, but they are going to, I asked them about it at the beginning yesterday, they're one of the third data reports. Yes. Yep, they are gonna take care of that.
Lauren, do you have anything else to say?
I know the financials in the paper, um, election, just it's been absorbing a lot of our time and. Trying to get a product for and everything that got behind during the election, so.
Yeah, we don't have any appointments. Does anyone have anything from the? Audience? We can't um adjourn, yeah, we have to go through the builder, which. You just can go and you just can stay, so.
We do still afford it though.
We do, we do.
For entertaining the purposes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the B I A, it's public charities.
Was he going? Jill, no.
Everybody. I don't, I think you said she's been buying this thing, you know? The B I A is about sixteen percent most likely.
You know, I'm sure she's going to see the roof, you you knew that.
Yeah, I don't know what we're gonna do there, that's for magic, I mean, I would there.
We have a, can we get an estimate how much it's gonna cost, it's been about sixteen percent? We actually are going to a meeting in Portier Town to fight it, but I don't know how, well, that'll work.
We never looked at different dental vision insurance.
We did look for dental or vision, we did look for another.
Yeah, I did that. But I did one vision.
I got it, it it helped, it it does a little bit, but I'm wondering. If you shouldn't just save your money and and pay the bill, because it, it's not that great, no, it's not.
Well, no, because I found one eye doctor that could get me in, that would take it. And our, our insurance pays seventy five dollars, but the exam was a hundred and ninety five.
Yep.
I'm like, I need eighty dollars a month for that.
Even if you don't take your insurance, then you just submit your bill directly to them and then.
Right.
You have to pay it and then present your bill and get a refund, but when does that change? If you want out of that, when does it change?
May.
That's almost a thousand dollars a year and it's, I get two cleanings, Ashton gets two cleanings and.
Of course, when we get our glass.
But still, that's a lot. Yeah, but I think they'd pay like a hundred dollars or like, I booked the glasses and.
Culture so on.
I didn't know if there was something, I didn't want to ever look to see if there was something better for the similar cost. So I realize the employees pay that portion, but certainly I can't be the only one who feels like that insurance is horrible.
It is not the best.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was something we were forced to do into, because the association accounting, so if it's.
No, you don't, I don't think we're forced into it.
We had nothing.
Okay.
And um, they came up with that and it was affordable and.
I want to ask you a question.
Living personal yours, uh, one was dermatology. And we didn't look at the insurance being anything, and then another one was on pathology, it'd be the bells. Apparently, I don't know if they had turned it in insurance, but. Yeah, it sounds like you need to get the the doctor or whoever and to make sure they have your insurance. Probably.
Okay.
Level one, nothing. Because, yeah, they called me and I just got the all, I mean, I said, oh, a hundred, then some dollars, and I thought, I've never. Normally, normally I pay a hundred twenty or something like that. Normally, normally I pay a hundred twenty or something like that. What if they just cut, they cut the.
Hey Dutch, Jerry.
Yeah.
Should we put it on the next agenda, I was just telling you, I know where there's a guy living there.
I did take this.
It's a motor home, but without tags on it. A residential trailer stand for that.
Can we just adopt that?
No, it's not turned in, he's got two of them sitting there. What's, what's the rule?
They have licensed their.
If it's here though, or July first, they have to pay.
If it's here by July, after July.
Even if it's registered in Kentucky, has license in Kentucky, all will be, or one license in Kentucky.
If it's here by July one.
In Mineral County on July first.
If your camper lives in Grand Palace, they're just, uh, they use their personal property taxes on the mineral, cause it's registered.
If it's actually sitting in Grand, some counties are flexible. Hampshire County is very strict, if it's in the county, they get the taxes.
Okay.
Um, other counties, well, if you live in Mineral, you wanna pay in Mineral, that's fine.
Okay.
I take it on the bar.
Yes.
She, she goes out.
They're all fairly. I was just curious, cause I knew, I'm sure there's no short about him, but like.
And that's why the county's.
Yeah.
I even need contact, say, if it's paid with Mineral, why don't we get it? If he agrees with me, but then they help it and they thought that we.
Well, cause to me, like, my camper is always parked. And Grand, well, I've been told right now, there's July first, it's part of Grand County, I'm there for July fourth weekend, but, like, I pull it. All over the place, so it shouldn't matter where it is, like.
Cause some people that live in Mineral have this camper of their culture, which has to fire. So, they were getting upset because they had to fire Luffy because. So, no one cannot pay here, and I said, she says, there on July first, you have to pay there, therefore you have to pay a fire Luffy.
Yeah. B M S fees on the.
Yeah, each camper has.
Well, that's probably a pretty substantial.
I think a camper's fifty dollars a year.
Still, but I can only imagine the number of campers near him, you're counting along river.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Bunch of them, yeah.
Yeah.
So, on July first, they were around all of the campers. And I even sent out letters to all the campers here, asking them who was on the property. But I said, I need to know. So. So, it's it, our camper is on our personal property bill.
But, but at the same time, if you look at like that, just where it is on July first, like, does it have to be in that county for a certain period of time, cause like. Why can't I just drive my vehicles and my camper to Maryland on July first, park it there for the day?
And I said, well, it's titled here.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I.
Go spend the day in Cumberland every July first, the same two grand.
One guy said he'd take it, like, give her a call and then bring it back on July, that's it, and I said, well, technically, it's still titled here, okay, and so.
There's a lot of people that live here in South Florida, Texas, and they're shopping, they're saying, it's property. Interesting.
It is.
Guess there's a lot of what if situations.
Interesting, it's another time.
Yeah, yeah, that.
When Jill find out about that, if it's on the budget to next year or end it, but the agenda. Let us, let her know to put it on. I got thinking about that, I look at that thing. I don't need, I don't know what the steps is, I don't know what we have to do, I don't. I appreciate.
Well, if it's paid off, if it's not moving. Well, that's what I'm saying, because I'm a law, you know, first, your regular tax, like, if I had a camper, I wasn't moving, the tax would die, I pulled off my insurance and. Like, it would just no longer exist, basically.
And Luke?
I mean, I wouldn't do that, but. Yes, sir.
Four days apart. Nothing, I don't think anything was growing then. No, I mean.
After the first month, we didn't get any rain.
I've only cut my grass once.
Yeah.
I have to check, that was, let's see.
Ten three through ten thirty.
I think one through there's, uh, competitions that that.
Yeah, over there, they were, they was having a lot of soccer over there.
I was gonna say, was there a tournament going on at that time?
Yeah, I couldn't think of the word yesterday.
See, there was a lot of tournaments going on over there, and they, I tell you, he did, you should not mow it that often, but if you wanna call him, I'll call him, we can talk to him. Because I know that they got a fuss now, cause that one woman was over there, he mowed it too. We was over there at uh, something, they presented Leah something because she's a senior in, in middle school, or it's not a senior, she's an eighth grader in the middle school. This is her last year, and they give them all something, and the one woman was fussing, cause look at that grass, and you just mowed it like two days before, and that was.
That was like, what woman, what woman was fussing?
Some woman over there, I'm telling her she can pay for him to mow it, you know? We'll gladly give her the bill, and, and, but it was, I'm not opposed to, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I don't know what the growth was like, I mean, that was tournament season.
It was tournament season.
I have no idea what the growth was like.
Normally, he don't.
And the grass has been growing faster now, last month, and what it grew all summer long, I have no idea if it needed those, those two times in a month.
But I don't, if you wanna call.
Mine wasn't growing that fast.
Well, I mean, it's, it's fun, I just, and I'm not saying we're, I'm just saying that, you know, do, do we really, do we really need to mow it that often?
Right.
That, that's all.
Oh, definitely.
At thirty days, we mowed it, we mowed it five times in thirty days, so.
Right.
But I know they was having, uh, tournaments.
Well, I mean, that's something we could, um.
It's only once a week, thirty days. I mean.
Well, one was like, they mowed it, then four days later mowed it again, and then seven days later mowed it again. Which, there's trail cams over there, he kinda gets certification every time he's there mowing, um, and, um, we can confirm that, I'm sure that did happen now.
Usually.
But the contract doesn't outline the maximum number of mows in a month, that's something they could, I mean, do whatever.
The, the Z U's his.
Everything.
Oh, well, I mean. Uh, is he the one, he just goes and looks at it?
Yeah.
Would you wanna talk to him?
No.
Then, should you do Jason's room book after we talk today?
Do what?
Could you do Jason's room book, get a soft him and draw that, okay?
And Eileen, email me right after that.
Oh, okay, and I called, and I said, I wanna talk to you, so.
She already had him written down, cause I told her the internet, actually after election.
Okay.
That he, that he was wanting to be going, and, uh, as far as I know, he was wanting, and she already had him written down, cause she was, she was texting the election night, wanting to know who won.
Yeah, and she just needed to know, to what we were in.
Well, she wasn't ever the one, she wanted to make sure who lost.
Nancy, she's the County Commission Association Executive Assistant.
To me, I didn't, I wouldn't.
Um, didn't look that. If you don't wanna stay, Eileen and I are driving, well, I'm driving back and forth, definitely, I leave my stuff to the daughter, and I'm driving back and forth every day. Uh, in a county car, you'd certainly be walking around.
Well, I'm not sure if Tracy's gonna go with me, uh, just get away, but thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I do appreciate that.
Where, where is it going?
Something outright, and a few, but I think.
Oh, she go.
Yeah, and we're gonna stop, there's some friends.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I wanna block this with that, I, that's a, you got, you need to go to that.
But, yeah, I'm already booked.
Yeah, I have booked myself, yeah, I need to do this.
That's, you're not gonna drive back and forth, you're gonna stay too?
I'm, I'm not driving, going back to downtown, no.
It's only our, man. I used to do it every day, I used to do it six days a week for school and work. Wind tester, more field.
That's through listserv, right?
And Bruce thing.
Yeah. Well, the email, the email came, would have came out through this server. And there's like, you have to call the hotel.
Have you booked yourself?
I'm driving back and forth.
Oh, you drive, you're not driving.
I'll ever stay if it's, but I, I mean, this, I can, um.
Yeah, going to, you know, fetch.
What do you want, Sunday through Tuesday, it's like you'll go out Sunday morning.
No, I'm not going on Sunday morning.
It starts at ten AM.
Starts at ten AM on Sunday.
I'll walk Sunday afternoon.
So, still, Sunday through Tuesday?
Yes, Sunday through Tuesday, I'll be two nights, Sunday and Monday night, yes. Where's it at out there?
Right downtown. Right downtown.
It's, it's not going down with the river?
No, no, no.
I thought that's where it would be, but.
Well, they normally have meetings down.
Usually, all.
Hotel Morgan is right in town.
Oh, it should have been renovated, I've seen some pictures of it, man, it's really nice.
All they've always had before was in. Uh, no, uh, Bridgeville.
Yeah.
Had it in Bridgeville.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take care of it tomorrow, which is something, you know.
Now, that is.
The first, second, and third, is that's not right?
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. Wait a minute, we got a community meeting.
You used to make it back.
Jerry said you will make it back.
Yeah, you will make it back, I'm not going to the meeting, because what are they, what are they gonna teach me?
Eileen and I drove to Dunbar back in one day.
Well, Jerry, you'd be at the state, where you would be getting taught, you'd be. Well, let me tell you, you could tell everybody your years of knowledge and experience and relay that to these young minds.
Yeah, um, I, I've had meetings in Charleston, drove down early in the morning for my meeting, and then drove back, saying I, it's a long day, though. It is a long.
Yeah, it's a long day.
How do they usually might go to Charleston?
I don't like to do it, I, I've done it, but I don't like to.
I didn't used to ever drive back and forth, but now that I have kids, um, I always come home.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that, I think it's a personal preference on the inner side of it, here's where I look at it.
The networking with.
No, well, networking, that's a big, big plus too, but the one, the other thing is driving back and forth. And you, it'd already take one deer to make up for whatever that recovery costs, or, like, my case, my case, I get sleepy driving. You know, and that's, that's horrible. Poor bear, bear gets hit up on sixty eight, goes, good.
Yeah.
I was coming down, uh, corridor, where you get into Elkins. And a bear runs down the hill, side of the road, stops at the bottom to back up over there, cause it's waiting for it to come out in front of me.
Did you get your truck fixed?
It goes in the ninth.
Oh, you just took it out for estimate?
I took it out for estimate, they had to schedule it. Multiple things, really, the lawnmower hit the side of it, scratched my door.
Wouldn't adjust it, would it?
Were you mowing?
Huh?
Were you mowing?
No.
Okay.
No, co- commercial company was mowing, and it had a zero turn, and when they turned, they got close to my truck, and when they turned, the bagger hit it. Scratch the side. And then I got a couple other dents I'm gonna have to fix while they're, uh, back then to, back then to my son's trailer. Uh, car trailer was part of it, that's probably, I don't know, fix that.
A week after we bought Ashton's new car, we store all the kids' sports stuff in the rafters above the garage. And I was getting down our tents and stuff for soccer season, that just put the kids' T-ball stuff back up there. Thought I had it all up there, good, Ashton pulls into the garage in her brand new car, and a baseball bat falls from the ceiling.
Oh, no.
Hits the hood twice.
Hmm.
Big T-ball bat.
What rubble?
Would they ever figure out, the day you brought it home and it broke down, would they ever figure out what was going on?
Put a new transmission in it.
A new transmission, brand new?
Are you kidding me?
You guys must have been really ripping it all the way home.
No, we weren't.
They probably tried to put the fluid in it.
Yeah. Now, they, um, they said there was a gear messed up on number seven or something, but they.
Wow. That takes your confidence out of a brand new vehicle, doesn't it? Doesn't break.
We're broke down in the middle of the road there on McMullen Highway, and Ashton is crying, on the phone with my stepmom, telling her to pick her up, pick us up, and I'm like. Can you stop for two seconds and get us off the road, stop doing all the things you're doing, and get us off of the road?
Yeah, that'd be, that should be priority.
Yeah, wasn't for her, she's already on the phone, she's crying, like, we can get out of the road, give it a little bit of gas, and, cause it would go, stop, yeah, I'm like, we gotta get out of the road. It's a pretty busy intersection here.
Three kilograms, sleep. We're about to stay past the road, and it's on, or not, we have a stage. But we're about to.
It's actually a constitutional, they, they don't, they don't.
The other states don't do it.
But it's in our constitution.
You a list, that's all you have to do is look that list, and that's the sign.
I'm, I'm thinking about signing them.
Next year.
You trying to get out of it?
Yeah, he is, isn't he?
Yeah, they'd actually have to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, that would not happen, that would never happen.
No, just cause you don't want to sign who's.
And that's really, one of the main reasons you all.
You talking about, you talking about waste of paper, look at the ink that we're wasting.
We probably could go to a paperless process.
I couldn't do it. I'm, I'm. Technology. Stupid.
Like Garrett, all of their invoicing process from beginning to end is all electronic, all of the signatures are done electronically, everyone reviews it digitally, they have their submissions.
We falsified, how many times have you placed their signature on documents, and you said, oh, you, can I do it, okay, and then you place their signature.
Hey, I was, uh, I was in Moorefield, we had a meeting, just a short meeting, just to approve a proclamation or something. And, uh, so I called in, it was Zoom, it was supposed to be Zoom, so Luke sent me the, this link, and I look at it and I thought. Where's that, where's the phone number? And anyhow, I tried to download it on my phone, well, it wouldn't go, I thought, good grief, so I called Luke, I said, where's the phone number? He said, oh, you old people, he said.
But mine wouldn't do when it hit, and I put in the code.
Well, I did too.
That's not right away.
I did, I couldn't get it, I was frustrated, I couldn't get it, and I thought, good grief. So, had to write all the numbers down, so I wouldn't forget them, wrote them down, so that I'd have them, and then called Luke, and he said.
Oh, man, he said, you old people with technology. I don't think I said that.
Something similar, it was something similar.
Probably.
But, uh, so then he gave me a phone number, I was able to zoom right in.
It's not, you didn't really zoom, you called in.
I called in, yeah, I was, yeah, I called in.
For the one minute and thirty seconds.
Well, I had to call in also, you know, I called in.
Well, I couldn't get it to work on my phone.
Wouldn't let me on.
And like you said, uh, Lauren sends me the agenda, I can't get it to download it on my phone, really?
Why's why started putting it in the body of the family, is that worth it now?
I don't know.
He probably didn't give it a. Well, I don't like it, cause then I have to take it and put it into a Word document.
I need to attach it also.
Yes, well, I mean, I can.
The one, first time I attached it and put it in the body, because last time I just did it in the body.
That's great, cause the only, I mean, I don't really care, I just have to copy into a Word document, but then the stuff's not bold, and you.
Yeah.
I, yeah, it just looks better when you send me the Word document, it's already.
Yeah, I prefer to see that too. And it.
I can get around.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jerry.
It's really important to print it out and bring it to the meetings. But, that's what the P I meeting schedule, I printed it for them and brought it, cause I felt like that was very important, I'll miss forward it to them, instead of you see this, I'm like, I'll print it, bring it. Um, serving our community with pride and commitment, Mineral County, building a brighter future together, honoring, honoring heritage. Honor, honoring heritage, shaping tomorrow, proudly serving Mineral County, what do you want on your magnet? These are chat G P Ts.
Oh.
Reconations.
You three decide, really?
I don't know.
I think it needs something more than just mineral kind of commitment.
I do too.
Working together for a stronger Mineral County, committed to our county, dedicated to our people.
I like working together for a stronger Mineral County, that sounds pretty good.
I'll do everyone, just chat G P T gives all.
No one is too wordy.
It's where Frosty's force fair came from.
No, we don't want a bunch of money.
No, you don't, you, well, you don't want the two words, because no one will read it.
Ace is doing a frosty thing.
Yeah, I see these snowmen up front.
From six to eight, it's up to eight, yeah.
Oh, tonight?
I think it's at six P M to eight.
I saw a snowman up front.
It was a snowman, my daughter said, it's so weird, seventy-five degrees up and you got a snowman.
Yeah, I know, this is odd weather, isn't it?
Um, working together for a stronger Mineral County, don't you want, I don't care, I just.
What do you guys think? Let them, let you guys.
In honor of you, put your words together.
You started reading before they knew it, you were talking.
Uh, about thirteen of them. Serving our community with pride and commitment, Mineral County, building a brighter future together, honoring heritage, shaping tomorrow, proudly serving Mineral County. Working together for a stronger Mineral County, committed to our county, dedicated to our people, growing together, serving together, Mineral County strong, proudly serving Mineral County, past, present, future, Mineral County Commission, here for you, honoring tradition, embracing progress. Community first, always your Mineral County Commission, building a better tomorrow for Mineral County, strengthening our roots, growing our future, Mineral County, united in service, driven by community.
Proudly serving Mineral County, that sounds good, that's what I was thinking, there was one up there that was right there towards the beginning, just said proudly serving Mineral County.
Past, present, future.
No, that's, that's too much.
Well, that's so.
Magnet, because you don't get, you don't want too much on a magnet.
No, because it'll be too wordy, it won't be. Unless you do it like Jerry said, or Roger said, anyone that.
Well, how, how big people want, yeah, we can make.
Get as big as you can get.
Looking at what you're gonna be using and measure, because if you get one that has like a, a dent where the trim is, it won't line up.
So most of them, there's a, there's a generic size that people put on their vehicle. Yeah. I'll measure.
Recognition one.
So proudly serving Mineral County?
What do you guys think, what do you think?
And you want.
The Mineral County Commission proudly serving.
Yeah, and are you putting the seal on it?
No. No, the seal is gonna be on the truck itself anyhow.
Yeah.
There won't be written for the seal.
So this is just gonna go on the back door?
I'll measure, see how mine.
Yeah, this is just addition to the.
Magic problem.
You can just measure the trucks out there, you just can't measure the door and.
Yeah, let's do that.
Mine, because I had mine comes down, and then there's a piece of trim that comes over and sticks down.
Well, on that Dodge, it's sort of flat.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it reminds you of your states that you have before you get put in a.
That's actually a belty setup. He was only worried about, for the seals, he was only worried about the traverse, because the whole front door says traverse, but right across the middle of it, he's like, I'm not sure what's that seal, I can fill that, but everything else is no problem.
I'll measure them once I have and see how big they were.
You need to measure the door you're using on.
I don't know, I can say, I don't have.
I'm not paying a bunch of money to get something to fit the whole door.
No, but, I mean, don't watch your trim, is what I'm saying.
Well, I know, that, now, there's.
I think that whole door is just.
There's no trim on that car.
There's, we can look at it.
I mean, we don't need it real big, but we need it. I know you got some, but I watch my money. You gotta watch your money, if you do.
And you're watching. I watch mine leave, about every day. Yep. Well, I'm biting the bullet buying that telehandler.
Are you?
Yeah, he's working up the invoice now.
Off the bulk?
Yeah. I hate it too. I wish they'd get back to me over Clark County rental, but that skids here.
But you buy your one?
No, I made him an offer and.
Did you go to that cell they had over at Four Esme?
Yeah, I did.
We can't have anything like that.
Well, they. Not one I wanted to take.
I've been looking at two of those.
I didn't, I didn't go to it, I, I watched it online. And made a stupid mistake and bid on the wrong, they had a camper, they were bidding. And I thought it, I thought it, they was on a different camper, and it was only like thirteen hundred dollars for this camper, and I'm like, man. Bid, dummy, bid. Nobody built a bid against me, and so I got it for fourteen hundred bucks. And I went down there and the camper's a piece of junk, it wasn't the camper I thought it was, and then.
Oh, man.
And I'm like, man, boy, boy, he was pretty upset, she was not. So I talked to him, like, you know, they talked to the guy that had it, and he didn't want to, he didn't want to take it back. Like, all right, so you had to buy it, he said, I had to buy it, and he said, uh, well, we can put it up on the next auction for you if you want, I'm like, yeah, just do that.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so like, two weeks later, I got, I got a, the pile of stuff in the mail, and I texted the random peer that runs it. And I said, what's that, what's that trailer going to auction, what's the, when's the date? And she sent me a screenshot and says, it goes off in four hours, it was like two in the afternoon, and it was going to, and the auction board was going to end at six P M, and I didn't realize it. Here was already up to twenty-two hundred dollars.
Oh, sweet. So you made some money on that.
I did.
That's awesome.
And I, that, I am not.
There's nothing like that happens.
I didn't make very much, just a couple hundred dollars, because they, I bid fourteen, and I had to pay the buyer, the buyer premium, which was ten percent. Uh, and then taxes, and then I had to go get the title transfer, which was a hundred bucks. So I got about seventeen in it by the time it was all said and done.
Wow.
So, yeah, yeah, I, and then the guy that bought it calls me, he's over in Moorefield, he's like, I don't have any way of holding it, how long can I leave it sit there? And I'm like, let it sit there as long as you want. He said, you know anybody that way can hold it over for me, I said, well, I can hold it over for you, I'm working close to junction, I can just haul it to Moorefield if you want me to. And he's like, oh, that'd be great, I'll, I'll pay you, I'll pay you, how much you want, and I'm like, uh, just give me some gas money, I'm glad to get rid of. See, I was like, I just, I just want to take it over and drop it somewhere and leave, I don't want to see the guy.
Yeah. Did you get the hydraulics stuck fixed on your?
No, it's still sitting, I got, uh, Bobby, uh, asked us to come down, work at it, work on it for me, when he gets a chance.
Have you all talked to Patrick Morrissey since he won governor?
No.
No.
I was gonna be congratulating. I shouldn't.
I was gonna congratulate. Pam, I, I sent a message to tell him congratulations for the Mineral County.
Didn't respond, or she hasn't gone back with me, no.
Pam sent me a congratulations.
Uh, but.
Who did?
Pam.
I'll bet you.
I just saw that Donald Trump appointed as chief of staff, and I was curious.
Did Pam's, what did she, did she golf pants?
No, she just texted me and said, congratulations.
Oh, did she, did you?
Now, I was just curious, if she has a, Pam, that he knows who's, some disappointees are gonna be in things.
And I don't know.
Change everything for Mineral County Day, isn't it? Like, all. Well, that's, we haven't got to book any of it, because we need to wait, and that's why I was curious if anyone in.
Yeah, we, we go, it's February this year, we're closer to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but everybody's gonna want us to tension this year, but.
They will.
Now, Governor Justice never seemed to meet with us, I'm sure he will.
He will, he will, he will.
But, um, it's all the cabinet secretaries, we can admit they are, so we can schedule meetings with them, because that's all definitely gonna change.
I was gonna say, definitely help plan on new ones.
Yeah. Um, this is, this is on a, you know, a trans, that's what the side was twelve by twenty-four.
We might want to get it a little bit bigger, would.
Twelve by twenty-four is what you were talking about, right?